For western Washington, rain likely and breezy conditions and strong winds are possible on the coast after midnight with lows in the low to mid 40s. Tomorrow, rain and wind and strong wind possible on the coast, highs near 50. East of the Cascades, rain or snow tonight and getting chilly, lows in the 30s and tomorrow, rain or snow, highs in the mid 30s to the upper 40s. It's 7 o'clock. Northwest Public Radio, KRFA 91.7 Moscow Pullman, KNJV 90.5 Clarkston-Lowiston, and KNWO 90.1 Cottonwood-Greengill, a community service of the Edward R. Murrow College of Communication at Washington State University, online at NWPR.org.
Welcome to Exploring Music. This is Bill McLaughlin, and this week, we're examining the works of Hector Berlioz. At the end of yesterday's program, we left Berlioz at the scene of one of his greatest triumphs, the first performance of his Requiem Mass, which was given in Paris at L'Isom de L'Édine in December of 1837. Now, I confess, I've always had a sort of picture of what it must have been like to be there for the first performance of Berlioz's Requiem. This enormous building, music of great power, great serenity at times, an occasion of tremendous solemnity. And I was surprised when I actually read some accounts of people who were there at that first performance and found that things may not have been quite as reverent as I imagined. For one thing, the bereaved wept quite loudly. There were a group of priests who chatted the Gregorian funeral service throughout with no regard to Berlioz's music being performed. And some of the folks complained that they were too far away to hear the music, except for the brass band that happened to be right in their face. But none of this seemed to matter very much.
Combination with the sheros? Is further communication to expect the bike?
Is that signs that you've seen or signs you think that should be there?
That is a DOT approved sign.
Okay, and do we have them?
I do not believe Moscow has them.
So you're advocating the possibility. I'll bring that up.
Yeah, and it's some wording like bicycle lanes full lane. Great. Any questions for Joel? All right. The next part of our agenda is called the open microphone. Members of the public may come up and speak to the commission regarding matters that are not on our agenda tonight or currently pending before the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you are interested, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit your remarks to three minutes. And I'll say, for the purposes of our audience tonight, that this is a mechanism that we use to allow the public to add an idea to our meeting that hasn't made it to the formal agenda. And we hear periodically from a member of the public in this session. And it's an informative thing, some of which turn into actual action items on our part, and some of which are just interesting to know about. So that's this moment in our formal process, and you'll see City Council does it as well, that invites the public to share a thought to the commission. Any takers? All right. Next up is a presentation from the audience whom I was just speaking to, students of Nick Samuel's. And let me contextualize this a little bit for the commission. You will recall that every other year, the city does a large survey of the citizens. And one of the questions on that survey is about growth. And it's something like, is there too much growth, about right, not enough? And the thing that has bothered me about that question for years is, what does growth mean? So I took that question to Nick and said, is that an interesting question for students to puzzle out a bit of? That is, what are the meanings? And this is a class, he'll introduce it more, that does survey research. So it seemed like a context that might be instructive to them and potentially informative to us. The other hat that you all know I wear is the Director for the Moscow Affordable Housing Trust. Adding housing, expanding is maybe a dimension of growth. So I also kind of pitched some of those ideas. And then they set about developing the instrument to go out and doing the work. So I will invite Nick up to introduce the work and the student group that will be presenting tonight. And thank you all for being here. Butterflies in your stomachs and all. I really believe in authentic learning, and part of that is real audiences.
It's great to be back. Thanks, Nils. We can do things slightly differently this time. I'm going to have a small role and turn it over to the experts. And most of these students have not had the planning classes that I teach, except, I think, two of them. So their forte, as Nils said, is survey research. So I'm going to introduce what we did. There's the whole team. The ones in dark with the stars are the ones who are presenting tonight. But the whole class really had a role in developing the questionnaire and conducting the analysis, with a little bit of help from Kate Edgley, a doctoral student who's got the opening role after I finish here. So our objectives were fairly simple, collecting defensible data to look at growth and development, to understand the role of mixed-use development, looking a little bit at neighborhood character, city identity, and then, and also sort of in there, the sort of trying to define what we mean by neighborhood. And they'll explain a little more how we got there. And then looking at citizens' needs and acceptance of affordable or downsized housing needs. And as before, we used sort of the standard survey technique, Dillman's design, total design method. We hand-delivered 265 questionnaires to adult residents of Moscow. We excluded the U of I on-campus housing, partly because a lot of them are a little disconnected from the community, and also they are really, really, really hard to sample. And when we sample a sorority or fraternity, it makes our household size get inflated. So we leave them out. So one adult from each randomly selected household, and we were accurate to about plus or minus 6% in terms of precision. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Cat Edgley, who's going to talk sort of about where we started.
So as Nick mentioned, the basis for our survey came from the 2014 City Survey. And one of the questions, as you mentioned, was, to what degree was growth a problem for Moscow? And the survey found that more than half of the respondents, 55%, felt that to some degree, there was a problem with growth in the city. But what we didn't know was, was it too fast, too slow? What was the problem there? But of this 55%, there are a few characteristics they all had in common. They tended to be, on average, older residents, mostly female. They were coming from more affluent households. And they tended to have been residents here for longer. And kind of across them, they tended not to be as happy with Moscow's quality of life. And they weren't as supportive of the statement that Moscow was a good place to live. And this 55% had some concerns about growth in other areas, too. So they tended to believe that employment growth was too slow. They thought that the availability of affordable housing here was poor. They also felt that business and retail growth in the city was too slow. So it probably doesn't surprise you that they also tended to disagree with the statement that the city hadn't done a, that the city wasn't doing a good job of planning for the community. So the survey kind of built off this to find out a bit more.
So I'm going to present to you what we found about what residents thought about growth in Moscow. So about 60% of Moscow is aware of the growth that's happening in our city. But 60%, over 60%, are very unconcerned or unconcerned. Majority of Moscow thinks that the city is growing just right. But, let's see, those who are aware of the growth, more aware of the growth, are more likely to think that Moscow is growing too slow or too fast. The more concerned that citizens are about growth, the more aware they are. And the longer that they have lived in Moscow or expect to live in Moscow, the more opinionated they are. So they think that Moscow is growing too slowly or too fast. So the short timers are the ones that think that Moscow is growing just right.
Thank you. I'm Cameron Johnson, so I'm going to talk about perceptions of development in the city. Most of the citizens of Moscow believe that growth is necessary but not at the expense of my values, or is just necessary in general. And very few believe that growth should be actively avoided. This is sort of the question that prefaced the section on indicators of growth in our community, if you'd just take a minute to read it. So we had them pick out in a list which of the following indicators were the type of growth and development that Moscow citizens would support. So the first, the top five indicators are all kind of generally improvements to things we already have. So, you know, more living wage jobs, new jobs for residents, improved infrastructure, improved amenities. Whereas the next four are all new things that we want. So, you know, affordable housing, locally, new locally-owned businesses, new infrastructure, new types of businesses in general. And following that, these are all the things that performed kind of poorly, under 40%. So the physical size of the city, for instance, was not cited as an indication of growth, nor were, you know, more national chains, higher density housing, or new commercial buildings.
Okay, I'm going to talk about mixed-use, or as the class decided to call it, mixed-up use. The acronym that somebody came up with was MUD. So I figured an adobe house is an appropriate picture for it. So we give them a definition, and I'm not sure that this is the city's definition of mixed-use, but it's one that we liked and could identify with. That is a combination of residential, commercial, cultural, and institutional uses linked by pedestrian access. Current lease is about, oh, 35% of the people who believe they lived in a mixed-use area. This is interesting. When Nils came to the class, he said he has a friend of his in a planning position elsewhere. He says, really, Moscow is just one big mixed-use zone anyway. It's not big enough to have neighborhoods. Surprisingly, 80% of the sample support mixed-use. And actually, we even asked him a question of whether they believe they live in a mixed-use zone. And roughly 30% of the people said, yeah, they currently believe they're in mixed-use. So we asked him a series of questions on what sort of things do you want mixed into these mixed-use zones? And we gave him a list of about 15 or 20 items. Go back. They respond, it's currently my neighborhood, yes, I support it, no, I don't, or I need more information. So at the top of the list was neighborhood gardens. And we'll talk a little bit more about the top five: neighborhood gardens, coffee shop, public art, and bookstore, and a small restaurant. So these are things that were preferred by over half of the sample. Down at the bottom was house of worship, beautician, clerical, laundromat. So looking at neighborhood garden and breaking down by those who support mixed-use and those who oppose it, even those who are against neighborhood gardens, against mixed-use, like neighborhood gardens. And, you know, 60 to 70% of the people really like the idea of a neighborhood garden. It's benign form of mixed-use. People who support mixed-use would like to see a small coffee shop or a café in their neighborhood, 70% of them. Public art. And it's interesting that some people actually see public art in Moscow, whereas the folks opposed to mixed-use don't see public art. Bookstores, and this was an interesting one, because we counted about six bookstores in Moscow. And there's probably some neighborhoods where people do live next to a bookstore, but they probably don't realize it. But again, the folks who support mixed-use are more welcoming of a bookstore. And same thing with small restaurants. People who support mixed-use want a small restaurant. Jesse Adams.
So, as he said, I'm Jesse Adams, and I'll be talking about factors that contribute to Moscow's identity and image. So we asked this question, what attributes are there that affect Moscow's identity? And we had about 20 of them. Here's three, and this is the question. And they were from negative three, strongly detracts, to three strongly adds. And out of the 20, some were strongly added, such as events and festivals, and of course, the University of Idaho downtown, quality of life, recreation trails are also really popular. And this is all a mean, an average of the count, so including the tracked and the adds. So I think it's very important to note that everything here was adds popular overall. Everything here adds. And the things that did score low, like city government level development, city planning, they're not looked at poor. They're part of Moscow's identity in a positive way. They're just not as positive as, say, events and festivals. And I really like that everything here was positive, because it's not like Moscow is simple. It's not just a logging town, doesn't have a one thing it does. It's gotten very complex, it's intricate. There's many things, part of Moscow, that add to its identity. And now Michelle.
So we had an idea for neighborhoods. We wanted to know what people thought of the neighborhoods that they were in. So we asked, when residents consider the term neighborhood, what specific characteristics come to mind? And the characteristics that we found that were mentioned most were friendly at 19.3%, community at 18.5%, and family at 16.3. And college students actually got a little bit at 0.4. I imagine that was by the, by the... And then we also asked, what is a neighborhood? What could people consider to be a neighborhood? And they were in two separate groups, which were neighbors and then geographic location. And for neighbors, the factors were friendly, family, and community is what they associated with that. And then we also had one comment, which was Sally with extra eggs. And from what I understand of the story, she would just come around to whichever neighborhood she is in and give people eggs. So she must have been a very important person to somewhat, to a few residents. So we thought that was great. And then her second view, basically, a neighborhood is a group of people that connect well together socially, mentally, and economically, and who live in close proximity to one another. So we asked, do you live in a neighborhood with which you feel closely identify with? And 60% of the participants that were surveyed do identify with their neighborhood, which is a very good factor.
I'm Susan, and I'm going to talk about the housing. So one of the questions we asked looked a little like this, and it didn't have these red marks in it. This is just, after we asked the question, we compiled all the data, and we put our means on the question. So how we asked this question was, on the first one, it says, my current home is too big for my future needs, right there, and then, or is it too small? And so if it's right in the middle, it was just about right. So it was interesting, because we looked at this across the median as well, and the data that we have here didn't shift very often. And also, it was identical to how long somebody lived in Moscow. So if somebody lived here for a short time, this data didn't change compared to when it was somebody lived here for a long time. Another question we asked was with these four variables, and it was asking the people, we're forcing them to figure out which of their kids they like the best, is a nice way to put it. And so we'll look here. So the choice was between affordable or right size. And you can see that 73% chose affordable, and then it goes right back down to 60 over appropriate features. And each bolded item that we have on this is the one that was picked over the other. So you can look at that. And then what we did is we took this and put this in a different chart, so you could look overall at what was picked overall. And you see that affordable was chosen most times, and then it was location, and then features, and then the right size. So then we had another question, just the same setup, and this time, we had a vast difference between a single-family home and a multifamily home. So we've got 90% here. And then another large difference was down here, an expensive house. Owning an expensive house that is affordable to maintain, rather than an affordable home that is expensive to maintain. But then, looking up here, sorry, got with the pointer. These numbers aren't very different. So we've got not too big of a difference here and here. So we've got paying less for a large home and a lot outside of town compared to more for a home, large home and closer to the center. But here, living in a higher-density neighborhood within walking distance of amenities. So what we took from this was that we should, it'd be best to plan for both of these people, because half of the population would like the large home and a lot outside of town, and half the population would like higher density within walking distance.
My name's Lindsay, and I'm going to give just a little conclusion. So people of Moscow, so according to the survey, people are aware of the growth, but they're not necessarily concerned with it. They believe, or there's a strong support for the development, but not at the expense of key values, and some of the values were listed earlier. Improving things already present in the community are valued over development that increases the city footprint. New types of services or amenities are welcome, and there's a strong support for mixed-use We also found that Moscow's identity is complex and tied to a diverse set of attributes. There's a strong consensus of what constitutes a neighborhood. The social dimensions are more important than zoning criteria. And for housing, affordability is most important above all other considerations. Housing preferences are also characterized by contradictions in terms of size, location, and walkability. And that's what Susan was talking about, was, you know, they preferred to be close to town, within walking distance, but they want the larger lots outside of town. This is just a short list we came up with, for focus on connectivity and access to housing and amenities, respect neighborhood cohesion, protect and promote the key features of Moscow's identity, support a diversity of neighborhoods, growth and development, and housing choices. Thank you.
Commissioners, questions or observations that you might have for our students?
I was curious, as I noticed on several of the slides, a lot of the questions you asked, it was interesting that in the college town, the need to increase student enrollment at U of I and having students in a neighborhood was pretty low on the list of priorities. What were your thoughts about that?
Could you come up to the microphone place? We're being recorded.
In part, I think it was because we weren't doing university housing. It was, we were specifically outside of it, as was in our parameters of this survey. Anything else?
And actually, related to that, even when we did the big apartment complexes that, you know, on A Street in south of town, that was, a lot of students, proportionally, they made up a really small part of our sample, because we treated each block as a single residence, rather than each apartment as a single residence, just to make it sort of spread our sampling around the district. And so that could be why. Or it could be that students just don't like other students. I don't know.
Other questions or?
I'm intrigued by the contradictions. And I think that you've correctly described it. It's a complex community, and the attributes are complex. I'm thinking about, for example, the issue about wanting to have more, like I saw the coffee shop and a bookstore. And yet, not too many months ago, as a commission, we wrestled with an issue where we were talking about a neighborhood that didn't want to have those amenities involved in a rezone. And so it just, but it strikes me that when we're dealing with these things, that it really is considerably more complex than maybe it appears on the surface. So it's, sometimes it's hard to draw conclusions about what people really want, because you're just, you're never really sure. But, I mean, we had a really interesting debate about that issue here on the commission. And so it just, I'm intrigued by the contradictions.
It is, and it's a question we've asked before in our surveys and found the same sort of, sort of, I don't know, mixed messages. But also this time, and we haven't done the analysis, but when we survey, the students go out, we send them to a voting precinct, because it's the easiest map of Moscow we can say, you go here. And so we could look at the spatially and see if there's certain precincts that have a characteristic or a support for mixed-use as opposed to others. But, you know, our sample size is a little small for that, but we know it might give us some ideas of where these people are.
It would be interesting to drill down into that a little bit to understand.
Yeah. And I know some of the students, when they were going door-to-door, some of the verbal comments they got, some people's idea of a neighborhood is, it's huge. You know, you live on campus, campus is part of your neighborhood. But other people live on campus, no, my neighborhood's someplace else where I spend more time. So it's a little more complex than I think a questionnaire can often answer.
Other thoughts, questions?
I think what came to mind for me, too, is when they talk about, for instance, if you want a coffee house in your neighborhood, or you think, what does that mean to you? What does a coffee house mean to you? Or if you want to have a bookstore, if you want, I mean, it would be interesting to sort of, you know, delve a little bit deeper into what people are looking for. I mean, I think at the end, it said that the focus on connectivity and access to housing, that people are looking for ways to connect with each other. And, I don't know, maybe that would be interesting to explore. I think about the place where my mother lived at Creekside, before she went to Good Sam, and how they have a community building that has an office in it, has a little laundromat, and a place where you can have coffee. You don't buy coffee, but, you know, it seems kind of like an ideal kind of setup for me, because then people can come to this kind of place and, you know, get together and have the connectivity. But it's not really a coffee house, and it's not really a bookstore, but there are puzzles there and things, you know? So thinking about neighborhoods in ways that things could be maybe built to satisfy the connectivity thing that aren't really retail necessary. I don't know. That's just one thing I was thinking about.
I always wonder, and I wonder this when I take surveys myself, at how much I'm influenced by what I would like to think. by what I would like to think that I think. That I believe I'm that kind of a thinker, but then, do I really, do I really believe that? If it really came down to the nitty-gritty and it was going to happen in my neighborhood, then would I still go with what I, does that make sense? So, are we really being honest when we answer the questions, or are we answering in a way we think we would like to perceive ourselves? And that would, to me, maybe make the contradictions appear. Like, I might answer it in a way that is very gung-ho about mixed use. But if something is brought before P and Z and it's an actual public hearing and it's around the corner from me, then maybe I would answer the opposite because now it's not theoretical, it's, it's real. And I can see things about it that are beyond what I thought originally.
The bookstore has neon lights.
Or people have to park somewhere, or there just might be, I don't know.
Let me respond to both Debbie and Rebecca's comments. I think you're right that, you know, when people answer a questionnaire, it's a little bit of wishful thinking. And we did ask them about mixed use. We asked them two questions. One, would you support it in the neighborhood you currently live in? Would you support it in Moscow? And people were more supportive of it in their current neighborhood, which I thought was, I mean, a slight, very slight difference. And I think Rebecca hit it on the head. It's, if you look at the five characteristics that people really want in mixed use, it's something that's more than a park, but it's a social, a social place. And I think, I mean, you could satisfy the need with a park that has, you know, a traveling barista with, you know, like we used to have downtown, you know? And, I don't know, a traveling bookstore and neon lights on the side.
Right here, whatever.
All right. So, I want to thank you very much. Several of the questions related to affordable housing will be useful to me later this month. I'm writing a large grant proposal to fund the next round of affordable housing development in town by our organization. And part of that, they asked for a market study, and I'll be able to use several of those items in there. So, thank you for that very practical use. You are welcome to stay for the next part of our agenda, or you're welcome to excuse yourselves now. We'll move on to our discussion of relevant criteria.
See you later.
Thanks. Neil, so I'll see you Friday, and we can talk about that.
Yeah, Friday morning.
See you later. See you tomorrow.
Those are good.
Things like restaurants, cafes.
Thank you.
Sister Susan lives in Minneapolis.
Trying to keep the meeting lawyers on.
Of course, it's a huge city. Well, and they have got exactly what.
Huge batch.
But they sure.
They were great. They just didn't.
The phrase that we go to, there's.
Oh, boy.
Claims to have been one of the inventors of cheese.
Yeah, they were perfect to give it a history because they were missing something.
When you go to that place, and they're great places to go, but they're servicing an area roughly the size of Moscow.
Yeah. And that's kind of what I.
You've got to have that many people in order to.
Yeah, do.
Yeah, keep your business going. And, but the number of people that come in that know each other because they go there. And you get to recognize people, and sometimes the seating arrangement is, well, we've got two extra seats, so sit down, you know? Very, it hit on a lot of the things that they were talking about, but there are enough people to make it work.
It is one of the challenges of a small community because my neighborhoods in San Francisco and Washington, D.C. was exactly what you were describing. I mean, they were fairly compact. We had every service that you could think of within walking distance. And, but yet, there was probably a population within five or six square blocks of what our city is. So, it's, I see that in Belltown in Seattle, for example. It's a tough nut to crack for a small community.
Well, when you live in, I've never lived in a city of that size, ever. And so, there are all those people that are that close by, but do you end up with any sort of sense that you belong there with them? Is there?
You do. You do get a sense of neighborhood with it, surprisingly.
No faces and visit with each other and?
You tend to, I mean, within a kind of a small group. It's, but that's a good point. I mean, there's so many of you, you could never possibly know everybody.
Well, and the other thing that I find interesting is the people in the neighborhood define the neighborhood as far as its boundaries. You know, my sister Susan, her husband Ron, you know, we live in this neighborhood, and then if you go six blocks over here, different neighborhood. And the city didn't plan any of it. I mean, it's just the way that it worked out, the type of people that move in. A lot of times, it has to do with the, where people came from, the ethnicity, I guess, would be. And so, if you get, I worked with a kid in Chicago that called himself a loogie, and I said, "A loogie?" And he said, "Lithuanian. I live in a Lithuanian neighborhood." And it's very well-defined in the city of Chicago. And across the street was not part of the neighborhood. Had to go the other way to be in part of the neighborhood.
Yeah, it's an interesting puzzle.
Yeah. It's, some of it the city can control, and others, other parts of it, just depends on who bought the first house and go from there.
Well, do you think that because we are not such a large community, that really the whole town is our neighborhood? It feels that way to me.
Yeah, I agree.
I don't feel out of place anywhere on town.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right.
And nowhere is too far to drive to go see somebody or do something.
Or walk. Right, like, yeah, right. Which, maybe that's why people love it here so much.
Well, or the neighborhood becomes the places that you frequent mostly, downtown, the co-op, or the library, or the, you know, and you start to, you know, have a rhythm. Maybe you always go to a co-op or whatever coffee house at 10:00 in the morning. You develop your connections there, but don't necessarily, you know, go to the other coffee house.
That's true.
You know, things like that, too. So, I don't know.
Okay. Well, more to puzzle. Moving on with the relevant criteria and standards for PUDs.
Okay. Well, this is the, I guess, the next chapter in our ongoing saga of looking at relevant criteria and standards under the code. So, we had recall, we had reviewed variances and conditional special use permits the last two times, and now we're on to planning unit developments. And just always start off by looking at Local Land Use Planning Act. Of course, planning unit developments are covered as part of that. Really doesn't tell us a whole lot, you know? It refers to the procedure requirements under LUPA. It also makes mention that you use the same processing of applications as for conditional use permits or special use permits. And so, some jurisdictions you'll see have the same criteria for planning unit developments and special use permits, like Boise. You may recognize that. They have the exact same criteria for those two things. And so, further on, really just defines what a planning unit development is. It's typically just a mixture of residential, commercial, industrial, or other land uses. Could be under single ownership, but it doesn't always have to be. There could be a subdivision plot associated with that which divides ownership for that area. So, it doesn't have to be under single ownership. It may include but not limited to requirements for minimum area, permitted uses, ownership, common open space, utilities, density, arrangements of land uses on a site, and permit processing. So, typically, all those things are laid out within ordinances. We're generally looking at efficient use of the land with respect to maybe the natural features of the site as well. Usually, those are really important things to take a look at with planning and developments.
Hi.
Sure.
Did you, did I hear correctly? You said that even though that says under single ownership, that's not necessarily true, meaning here or meaning anywhere?
Well, it says they may. So, in the beginning, your planning unit development may be defined in a local ordinance in an area of land. And then, it goes on to say in that second sentence, "May include but are not limited to requirements for minimum area, permitted uses, ownership." So, you could have, yeah. Yeah. May is kind of, it was, it struck me as a little odd, too, when I first read it, thinking that it may refer you to, that just has to be developed under common ownership, but it's not, not the case.
Mike, before you go on, what struck me is the last sentence, or the last two sentences. Denial of a PUD permit or approval of a PUD with conditions unacceptable to the owner may be subject to regulatory taking analysis. I guess what's potentially alarming is somebody comes in proposing a PUD and gets denied, and then claims that's a taking.
Yeah, they're always eligible for that analysis. And really, with any land use action, so rezones, conditional use permits, special use permits, we always send out a letter after the fact saying that they're eligible. Even if it got approved, we'll send out that letter just for this portion of the code, saying that they're eligible for the takings analysis. I don't.
Not a claim, but an analysis.
Yeah, it's an analysis towards that. So, typically, what happens is, we've never actually gone through the process, but somebody's requested one, and then, we had a subsequent code amendment that cleared things up. I think it was the resident street variance issue, which we had a code amendment for, which, so that, they ended up going down that road, but ended up retracting the analysis. But typically, staff would analyze that, and then, it ultimately ends up, I believe, with the Attorney General of Idaho, so Lawrence Wausden, typically ends up in his office. So.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to kind of go through the planning unit development chapter of the code. I think the criteria should really tie back to the intents and purposes of planning and developments, why we have them within the zoning code, why other jurisdictions have planning unit development options within their jurisdiction. So, a little long, but I wanted to read through it. And so, "In select instances, departures from the requirements and allowed uses in the zoning districts of the zoning code may be made based upon established criteria through the PUD option. The purpose of the PUD is to permit and encourage innovative, economical, and attractive development, which allocates appropriate areas for improvements, open space, and recreation." Which includes land uses which harmonize with natural features and constraints, which promote efficient, innovative, economical, attractive, and environmentally sensitive mixed-use development, which efficiently phases and locates public and private service and facilities. The PUD option should be used for innovative subdivision of land, innovative development, redevelopment, or reuse of one or more parcels of developed or undeveloped land under single ownership or control. It should not be used as a mechanism to alter or sidestep use and density provisions of an underlying zoning district without acceptable justification. Also, should not be used as a mechanism to address development issues which are more appropriately addressed by securing a variance, CUP, SUP, and/or the rezoning of land. So, if you, if you notice, a lot of the things that it mentions in this statement will want to try to tie back to the criteria. And I think a lot of the criteria that you'll see in our current language, as well as some of the other jurisdictions, have a lot of those same things. And, you know, they're also consistent with special use permits because largely, you're looking at a lot of the same things fitting in with areas, or the surrounding area being consistent, harmonious with the surrounding area. And so, they have a lot of overlap between the two things. So, we have quite a few criteria for PUDs, of course. It always has to be consistent with the comp plan, as with a lot of our other land use actions. Has to be consistent with the intents and purposes of this chapter, so tying it back to that introductory paragraph that we just reviewed. And then, we go into almost, you know, a little bit more detail than you typically expect out of criteria and standards. So, we have a lot of the physical elements of the proposed PUD, and then includes such things. You really don't need to list all those specific things. As long as it fits in with the character of the development area is really what you're looking for with that criteria. It just provides numerous examples that really you could, you might get hung up on, you know? It's maybe a little bit too much detail than you typically expect out of that type of criteria. It goes on to subsection D. Any departures of the proposed PUD from the specific provisions of the zoning code or subdivision code have been justified. So, it has to relate back to the intents and purposes. Special features and characters of the development site, surrounding area, or other features of the development that are consistent with the intents and purposes of this chapter and comprise a public good. So, that one's problematic just because it's hard to understand really what it means. And then, I think we had one maybe before about comprising a public good and really what that means. I mean, it's pretty easy to argue that anything would be a benefit to the public, you know? It creates housing, creates jobs, you know, efficient use of land. Really, you don't see that show up in any other jurisdictions' criteria that we've seen. Moving on to subsection E. The proposed PUD will not have significant unmitigated adverse impacts on the public infrastructure and services. I think we have the same type of word, unmitigable, I think, is in our rezone criteria. So, you have just a really, you can tell what that criteria is getting at, it's just a little bit oddly worded. So, but I think it's important to make sure that the impacts on the public infrastructure and services are not going to be too great. Then, this always comes back with any land use action promoting the public health, safety, and welfare. And so, this is the portion of the criteria here that we want to relate back to that and make sure there's not going to be any compromise there. And it also promotes the efficiency and economy and use of land and other resources. So, this is kind of tying it back to the intents and purposes statement. Subsection G. Uses in the proposed PUD are permitted in the underlying zoning district or allowed and justified in accordance with the provisions of this chapter. And so, you know, that's really what PUD allows, is a mechanism to maybe increase density for residential uses, also is a mechanism to allow maybe uses that weren't normally allowed within the underlying zoning district, as long as they're properly mitigated and fit in with the surrounding area. And then, we have the last one. Residential densities or other bonuses allowed for housing type or land use not otherwise permitted in the underlying zoning district conform to the provisions of the chapter and are appropriate for the site and the surrounding neighborhood. So, really, they need to meet those requirements anyway for the base density and whatever bonuses they're allotted under the PUD process. And so, you know, you're almost stating the obvious, but it's probably good to have something like that in there. So, we looked at Boise, like I mentioned before, special use permit is the exact same criteria, but they, you know, I think they both fit. And so, you know, you're looking at compatibility with the surrounding area, making sure there's no undue burden placed on transportation, public facilities to the site. It's large enough to accommodate the use in all the yards. You know, they, like here, they have a lot more detail than maybe you need within the criteria. Proposed use complies with all the conditions, will not adversely affect other properties in the vicinity, so similar to compatible with other uses in the general neighborhood. And then, it has to be in compliance with the comp plan. Subsection six and seven are just specific to certain types of development, ones that have multifamily or there's a drive-through window. So, those don't really apply here. Looking at quarter lanes, just similar language, conforms with comp plan, has to be compatible with the surrounding area, is compatible with natural features of the site. In this case, they. In this case, they have an overlay zone that protects hillsides, so they have some additional criteria there for soil erosion, lower slopes, slide damage, flooding problems, things of that nature. So, kind of protecting those natural features that may be specific or unique to a certain site. Location design and size of the proposal or such, the development not adequately served by existing streets. So, you know, once again, just making sure the existing services are going to be adequate to serve the proposed development. And then, you know, kind of a larger issue is just providing enough open space. And typically, that's kind of the main goal, at least one of the main goals of planning and developments is to maybe a little bit more compact, denser development, which allows for more open space surrounding. Maybe you're preserving or repairing an area up against a creek or a hillside and, you know, locating development out of maybe an area that may have sloughing soils or is located on a hillside that could have slide damage or other type of natural hazards. And they say off-street parking provides parking sufficient for users of the development. This is pretty much unique to Coeur d'Alene. And, you know, it's another thing that the PUD process allows is for deviations in parking requirements. So somebody could technically request a reduction, but generally, they, in order to justify that, they would provide maybe more bicycle parking or, you know, pedestrian routes through the development, something to, you know, in order to justify, maybe they're located closer proximity to mass transit. Some things that would, you know, you'd be able to point to to justify maybe a reduction in parking for a proposal. The proposal provides for an acceptable method for the perpetual maintenance of all common property. So, and that's just, you know, looking at a PUD with just one parcel, one development that's not going through a subdivision plat at the same time and dividing ownership. You have a lot of these areas that, well, maybe the HOA takes it over. So even Tampa Commons, Green Acres, are, you know, those PUDs still have all the common areas where the homeowners association is responsible for maintaining all the landscaping and, you know, sometimes, in the case of Tampa Commons, maybe that's a selling factor if you move in there, you know, you get all the landscaping maintenance done, you don't have to plow your street in front of your property, maybe they plow your driveway for you. Typically, you know, Coeur d'Alene wants some type of plan in place in order to ensure that the maintenance of the PUD is going to continue into the future.
But a PUD wouldn't need a HOA mechanism, right? I mean, if it had nothing, if it was along a street, it was just a change in density or form or something, but each lot directly accessed the street and there was no shared property.
Yeah, there doesn't have to be an HOA.
Doesn't have to.
Yeah, I mean, this is, I guess, unique to Coeur d'Alene that they provide an acceptable method for professional maintenance of all common areas. And so, yeah, I mean, you could have, like Prospect Place, really doesn't have any common areas. You know, I mean, that was probably the last one that we saw, that was largely already developed. I think their only common area was just the community parking.
Overflow parking.
So.
Do they have a different definition of a PUD that makes that not seem like an odd item to include?
Well, maybe they had an issue with, with that in the past, that, you know, maybe that wasn't in place and so there was a question about maintenance and they had maybe problems arise where, you know, maybe it was a public nuisance for not taking care of a certain area of property. I'm not sure.
But doesn't it seem that if you're going to require a common area, which this does, then it follows that you would have some method for ensuring that it was maintained?
Yeah.
I mean, it was tied together because what Nils was talking about, there would be no common area, I guess, but this would tend to imply that if you do a PUD, you have to have 10% of the common area.
That's how it sounds to me, like they have a different picture of what a PUD really is than we do.
Well, a lot of these requirements, so the percentage of open space, that would typically be within your ordinance itself, it generally isn't in the criteria. And so, you know, you've seen with a few of these that actually lay out requirements that should be in the ordinance itself and they're, you know, in the, in the language, and they show up in the criteria. So it is, you know, a little odd. There's only a couple of them, I think this is one, and I think we have Post Falls that has the same thing. So, yeah, they have a little bit more detail on there, they have the same 10%, so, you know, maybe one copied the other. I mean, they're close proximity to each other. I think the planning director is now, the former planning director for Post Falls is now in Coeur d'Alene, so maybe they carried something over and revised that recently. But, so we started out with, provides benefits that would not be achievable through compliance with normally required zoning standards and regulations. Once again, compatible sanding area, conformance with the goals and policies found in the comp plan. And then goes through the open space, detailed open space requirement. And then we actually have, yeah. So we have, you know, something similar to Coeur d'Alene for the maintenance of those common areas, so that's seen in there too. They're pretty similar. And then it's, you know, harmonious with the surrounding area. Provide adequate, properly arranged facilities for internal traffic circulation, landscaping, and such other features and facilities that may be necessary to make the project attractive and efficient. Buffering or screening, commercial industrial uses from residential uses within or adjacent to the development must be incorporated into the design. So, provides a little bit of direction there, but those are things that you typically, like I said, see within the ordinance itself and not within the criteria. I guess this brings us to Pullman, which is pretty bare bones. They just say that has to review the preliminary application for conformity with the comp plan, zoning code, other chapters. And then the two additional criteria with compatibility with existing and planned land use in the vicinity, inadequate assurances that the planning and development will be developed as presented in the application, so. So looking back at ours, you know, I think the goal from the onset of this was to make the criteria simpler and more dependable. You know, everybody knows what is expected from the applicant, from staff, from the commission, from council. And so, what we had come up with here is quite a bit simpler than what we have right now. So, you know, looking at comprehensive plans, so largely unchanged with the first one relating to the comprehensive plan, second one with the intents and purposes, I think those are, remain largely the same. Looking at subsection C here, I think all you really need, you know, all these, all those elements contribute to fitting in with the surrounding area, but I don't know that you necessarily need to list roof pitch and building materials and colors in your criteria. And so, simplification of that would be the proposed PUD is compatible with the uses in the surrounding area.
And you also lost the idea of contributing positive, contributing in a positive manner. That, that's a higher bar than just compatible.
It is, yeah.
And then what is contributing in a positive manner boiled down to?
Yeah.
And.
Pretty unclear.
Well, what does compatible really mean, too? People are living in a house. I mean, that's, you could be really bare bones and say, well, that's compatible.
Yeah.
Just look at some couples.
But if you propose to change the effective lot size, the density substantially, and this looks like an apartment building in what is otherwise an R1 neighborhood.
Yeah.
That's where it becomes incompatible.
Sure.
But it's going to be a judgment call, all right, about what feels compatible. This looks like a large house, but it's actually three apartment units inside.
Well, and we had talked, I feel like we had talked in the past about the mass of something, how much is it crowding the street as opposed to, as you look down a row of houses and they're all set back and they're all kind of similar size and then there's a behemoth of something. And is that compatible? Is that keeping with what the neighborhood feels like?
Yeah, and then if I just bought a lot and built a behemoth of the house by right.
Yeah. That's right.
It's a slippery, it's a slippery deal. Fill that 12,000 square foot house.
But, that's not really the same because this is already an exception. A PUD by itself is saying this is an exception to the rule. Well, how much do you make that exception?
Right, that becomes a judgment call, yeah, okay. It's a little bit bigger or it's a little bit denser, but within this neighborhood, there's textures that are like that.
Yeah, so I guess I worry a little bit about making it too terse in the wording.
Well, it's interesting, in the original, you're talking about compatibility with the character of the development area. And in your condensed version, it's, you're talking about compatibility with the uses, I think is the word you used in that one. The compatible with uses in the surrounding area. This is compatible.
With the character.
With the character of the development area. No, that's two different, pretty different, but which, what are we going for here? The use or the?
I would not like to lose the character part.
You would not?
I would not.
Yeah.
I don't.
So what do we mean by uses?
I'm not sure what uses mean.
Duplex across the street and then a single family.
We usually use uses as a list of, you know, churches and restaurants and so on. We want it to be more compatible than, just because it's residential doesn't necessarily mean it's compatible with uses and, with the residential uses in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, you could have a neighborhood that's completely single-family residential and instead of doing a traditional neighborhood design, maybe with just a little bit more density, they, you know, try to propose a PUD with a three-story tall apartment building that would, you know, probably wouldn't be compatible with the uses in the surrounding area.
Yeah, so, but I take your point, that character allows, in some sense, it's more ambiguous, but it also allows more conversation about what is character. Which moves us towards maybe a form-based code. The character of this is, it looks like a single-family house, turns out it's a restaurant inside. I mean, I don't know if we go that far, but.
Well, and C, in the original, starts out with the physical elements of the proposed PUD, so that's another, so physical elements or characteristics or, as opposed to uses. What, what do we want to say there? What compatibility are we going after? The physical elements, the character of the area, or the uses of the, kind of figure that one out?
I see your point and it leaves out some things that are fairly broad, yet provide some guidelines in the old code. But I wonder too if, if by sticking with that, some, a lot of that language seems to go beyond what the planning PUD part of the loopa says. And I wonder if you run into a problem of, well, if you're, if you're more strict or more requirements than the underlying code, if you run into that takings issue. The code allows for obviously local discretion in land use planning, but you can't have too much discretion.
By uses, do we mean zoning then, or?
Well, it would typically be just the, what's developed around the area. So, the texture of what exists surrounding the PUD, so.
Kind of the zoning?
Yeah. Well, I mean, it, I think that you would take that into consideration when you're, when you're looking at that, but it would be more specific to what's currently out there surrounding the area.
So as John was saying to me, if your neighborhood currently is a hodgepodge, and we'll view that in a positive sense, that there, I live in one, right, that, you know, there at the end of the block is neighborhood business and you've got.
Yeah.
That, a business, and then there's a couple of apartments and there's a couple of single-family house. That becomes that character. And the PUD say, well, I'm going to add another restaurant or bookstore as part of, and then are we going to talk about the form and the, because that restaurant might demand parking that would all of a sudden break up the texture of the neighborhood, because it would take out a lot's worth of space as just parking lot or.
Yeah, I guess I'm just asking, what are we, what are we?
On Gregory's companion question, are you getting more specific than the underlying law allows, would be the.
Then you also run into, I mean, compatibility is a moving target. What's, in Nathan's chime, if you were, with a strict definition of compatibility, you could get stuck with one thing because you're always, whatever you're butting against is going to already have a characteristic that you, that you have to be compatible with. You've also got the feature of PUDs in the code that says they're supposed to be innovative, which goes against compatibility a lot of the time.
But it's also a request to get to do something that the underlying code already says you can't do. So, you know, by asking for a PUD, you're already asking for special concessions from the city and for that, you're willing to make concessions yourself as the developer, so.
Typically required to.
Right, but if the PUD process weren't even there, then you're already limited in what you can do, right?
Yeah, it would just be what you could do in the underlying zone.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there wouldn't be really any way to creatively go about your grand idea of.
So I see what Greg's saying about it. It could seem like it's more strict, but that may only be in some narrow sense, but in the overall sense, the developers being allowed more flexibility than the zoning code would have let them have. But you can't have something for nothing, so if you want to do this, then here's what you have to give up as part of that. Does that make sense?
I just, the compatibility point in the Coeur d'Alene, the third point, just sort of companion-like, I guess. The proposal is compatible with natural features of the site and adjoining properties. So that's, just throwing that out there. It's not as, it doesn't talk about character, but it's compatible with natural features of the site and adjoining properties, so.
Well, adjoining properties would be just the same as uses in the surrounding area.
Okay.
So that would be one of the.
Well, I think that's what I'm trying to figure out here, is what do we mean by uses?
I mean, if we were concerned about the character and fitting in, you know, something you could easily do is the proposed PUD is compatible with character and uses in the surrounding area. We could try to insert character in there somewhere.
Yeah.
You know, but looking on, further on in the criteria, the last one, you know, could, and maybe that's not strong enough, you know, residential density, proposed land uses and design proposed within the PUD promote the innovative, efficient, economic, and attractive development of the subject property. I mean, that's really the intent of the PUD per our intents and purposes section in our code. You know, those are. You know, those are really the four main words that you see over and over again within that section are innovative, efficient, economic and attractive development. And, you know, I venture to say if it wasn't, you know, if it didn't fit in with the character of the surrounding area or didn't contribute to that, it probably wouldn't be attractive development, you know?
I'm not convinced about that, but. To me, it could be evaluated on its own, judged to be attractive, but not compatible.
Yeah, the Trans Barica building in San Francisco, everybody's been doing sort of straight-ahead skyscrapers and then they do this triangular thing, stick-a-mouse and the, yeah.
Yeah. I'm not sure I consider that one attractive either.
Oh, I'm not sure. Somebody thought it was attractive.
Well, and it wasn't compatible. The tone of the PUD code is creativity over and above compatibility without jettisoning compatibility.
Yeah. I agree, it's a balance, but I would be.
Mike, I have a question about D.
Okay.
The location, design, and size of the proposed PUD would be adequately served by existing streets, public facilities and services. I noticed you took out the unmitigable part.
Yeah.
And I, it's hard to, it's hard to imagine any new development that is adequately, always adequately served by existing facilities. There's usually some expansion that needs to happen, there's some modification.
Yeah. Yeah, I had, I'd taken that actually from what we'd come up with for the special use permit or conditional use permit, and so that was that similar language. But that's generally just going to be one of the requirements that if there's a, you know, a sewer line that needs to be extended in order to serve the development, you know, that's just kind of implied that, you know, they would need to extend the service, the sewer line in order to serve the area. I think what we're looking at here is more of existing capacity of services, you know, maybe the street is a, just a local residential street and they're proposing, you know, a PUD with just a density of 24 units per acre and, you know, maybe it's just, you have some constraints you're working with, with the street system or the sewer system that may come into an issue, you know, have, run into an issue with that. So I think I mentioned before about all the master plans that we've done with sanitary sewer, storm sewer, multimodal transportation plan, you know, a lot of these, we have models now where we can go in and see any constraining, you know, constraint points and identify those and, you know, really analyze the effect of the proposed development on the whole system. And so that's really what we were, you know, shooting for with this one.
I'm thinking back to the, was it Harvest Hills, the PUD that we struggled over, or not PUD, but the rezon that we struggled over, and the neighbors, multiple neighbors' concerns about traffic on Mountain View, which I understand their concern, if they're trying to back out of their driveway and they can't do it, that's a problem. But how to understand and help them understand that there will be more traffic in some sense, either from this development or from the one up the street, and that that in and of itself isn't, can't be the basis for, it's not mitigable. You add more houses, you add more cars.
Yeah.
I mean, you might do some things on the margins of encouraging bicycling or something, but you can't assume that you won't get more traffic. And you can't say to them, well, I don't want any more development, I like it the way it is. So just, that comes back to this, how does this document communicate to the public who come in to testify that they should expect that that complaint will be hard to articulate in a successful way?
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, you look at Mountain View and that's a designated minor arterial. That's the major north-south route on the east side of town, which eventually heads east and then north again. So, you know, you have that issue and then you have maybe the issue that on arterials, you're not allowed to back out anymore. So all those existing homes that were allowed to, you know, back out of their driveways, it's just unsafe to be able to do that. And so, you know, you have to look at maybe the long-range transportation plan and what the street's designated as, and, you know, it's intended to carry pretty high volumes of traffic and that's going to be the major arterial for development as it grows out to the north and to the east. And, you know, we've been in the process of expanding and improving that street through capital improvement projects and, you know, I would say that it'd be adequately served.
But you could still have angry members of the public who said, we raised this issue with PUD and they ignored us.
Yeah, you could always add, but we could always, you know, run the numbers and prove that we have capacity for our sewer lines, we have sufficient fire, you know, water flow to, you know, fire concerns, fire flow, things of that nature. And so we can actually, you know, run the numbers and put it in there and that would be the intent behind making sure that you're going to have adequate services to the site. And then when I endanger the public health or safety, so just, you know, one of those public health, safety, welfare, tying it back to that, so pretty similar to what we have with subsection F here. We had taken efficiency and economy and put that really at the end, so consolidated that with the one we had covered before, residential densities, proposed land uses and design proposed with the PUD, and then innovative, efficient, economic, attractive development of the subject property.
Okay, so are you comfortable with direction that you're getting from the commission?
I think so. I mean, I think the only maybe question is just.
On C.
Yeah.
I would be more comfortable with C with the character and uses in the surrounding neighborhood.
I agree with that.
I do, too.
Okay.
I think you got plurality there.
Well, covered.
And then if that's it, yeah, that's, we're done.
So before we adjourn, I have one more little item for you, it's a personal note. I will not be returning to commission in January. My term is ending and the mayor has elected not to forward my name for reappointment. So I want to commend you to continue working on these relevant criteria and standards. I think that that communication to the public, the whole communication to the development community is pivotal. I mean, from my education background, assessment is where it's at and these are part of that assessment tool. So I really want to commend the care that has already gone on and wish I could stay to the end of the RCS work. I also want to encourage you to think carefully about the leadership that you would like to be choosing for this group for next year. We would normally be choosing a new, or confirming at least a chair. I don't know what Wendy's inclinations are now. Two years ago, she was throwing her hat in the ring, so you may want to explore with her that. And then for the public, just want to say that on the city website is, on the commission's page is the instructions and information if you wish to apply for this or any other commission, that it's always a sort of open invitation that you throw your hat in the ring and the mayor will review those and advance them as there are openings and needs that the mayor sees fit. All right, with that, we are adjourned.